Well, it's like fifty girls. It's different than.
I'm not, I'm not.
And a parking lot.
Yeah.
Like where you just see, like a traffic to go, like you're waiting in my door.
Okay. I know.
He was so close.
He's like, I'm actually so close.
Steve, you don't even have a superintendent, you know?
We don't.
Yeah, but.
That would be, that's pretty.
It would kind of be weird. You know, there is a girl, I'm like, she's, she's, she's pretty odd. I mean, I'm not in that way, but I'm like, it's pretty.
I know.
Well, that's a kid. He's waiting for somebody. He was so.
Yeah, I know. You guys are still.
I like my color. It's not on Wednesday.
Fifty-five. Yeah. It's a nice.
What's that?
No, we'll say.
I just want to. Oh.
The judges are here.
There you go. My hand is like.
They just, yeah, they're still in the boardroom, so.
Aloha.
Tiffany, you'll just appoint.
You are the queen bee.
But will it be on you then?
All right, can I get us started?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
All right, good evening. Glad you all are here. This is a public meeting of the school board of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And tonight, Tawny Schmidt is joining us via phone, and Joel Anger is appointed our clerk. As always, we'd like to take a moment to honor our country and our flag, so if you would stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
Some more.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda is approved. And now we have some special recognitions of our West gymnast Olivia Burns as a state qualifier.
So, Jackie Vorpal and Olivia, if you'd step up, please.
Hi, I'm Jackie Vorpal. I'm the West Bend West gymnastics coach. This is Olivia Burns. She qualified for state again. This is her second year. And she qualified on four events. She placed twenty-third on beam with an eight, five, three, three. On all-around, she placed twentieth with a thirty-four point nine six seven. And she had her best two events, which were vault. She placed twentieth with a nine point zero one seven. And on bars, which was her highest of the season, was an eight point eight five, and that placed her sixteenth, and that was her highest place. She really represented West well, as she did last year, so congratulate her on doing a really nice job at state. Thank you.
Congratulations, Olivia. We are super proud of you.
So next, I'd like to have Gwen Havorka come on up. So Gwen, if you'd stand up here. Gwen is one of our senior bowlers. She was the anchor bowler for our team this year. She's a four-year varsity letter winner in bowling, three-time, or excuse me, three-time first-team all-conference, three-time team-state qualifier, and two-time individual-state qualifier. She took first in conference in singles, and all-state, she was made all-state as well. She participated in the all-state All-Star Games this, it was a couple weeks ago, correct? And, yeah, that was in Madison. The top five bowlers from each of the ten districts were represented statewide, and Gwen was one of the representatives from our district, so let's give Gwen a round of applause. Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations, Gwen. Athletics brings a lot of pride to our community, and you two women are part of that, so thank you for that. The average? What's your average? Wow. That's amazing. No bumpers, are you? I still use them. All right, moving along, we have some student reports.
Good evening, everyone. So this Wednesday night, the Compass team is going to be holding an event at the Silver Lining Arts Center. We're going to be having the hypnotist Paul Knight come. He's going to be there from seven to eight-thirty PM, and tickets will be five dollars. And I remember freshman year when we had our hypnotist, and that was a lot of fun, and it got everyone involved, and it was super crazy and fun, so I hope this gets a lot of people to come and build friendships. Also, that, this Wednesday, the orchestra students are leaving for Scotland. We are so excited, and I cannot wait to put on a concert tour across the globe, like, it's going to be crazy. We are going to be stopping in Liverpool, Edinburgh, Iverness, Glasgow, and Manchester, and we're so excited. And then, after this week is over, we're going to be having our beautiful spring break. We're so excited. What, the day after we get back, that Wednesday, I believe, it's Tuesday or Wednesday, quarter three is ending, so we only have one more quarter after that, and it's going to fly by for us seniors, and it's going to be so great. Thank you.
All right, good evening. So to start off, I'm going to talk about athletics, aside from the two that were just mentioned. Golf and soccer have just begun their first practices, and there are new coaches for the West Girls Varsity Soccer and East Boys JV Golf. Both the East and West track teams have begun their first indoor meets, and the West Boys Track, in fact, traveled all the way to Dubuque for their first meet. In that meet, Cannon Melstrand broke the school record for indoor pole vault. That's really exciting, and I know he's very proud of himself. The West Girls Four-by-Four placed second at the UW Parkside Meet. They did phenomenal at that meet, the whole team. Aside from athletics, East Forensics just placed fifth at the meet at Arrowhead on Saturday. I know that was a big accomplishment because that was a really strong meet. The Compass Talent Show, I think it was about two weeks ago on that Friday, was a great success, and there was a ton of students that displayed wide talent and really represented our school super well. Compass March Madness attendance is occurring at the high schools right now, and it's a great way for students to be encouraged to have great attendance, and as the reward, they get to watch March Madness basketball games, so it's a great reward. And finally, the Mile of Art is being displayed all downtown West Bend, starting at the old courthouse. So if you're ever looking for something to do, it's a great way just to walk around and see all of the beautiful artwork displayed by our students. Thank you.
Sorry. Hello, everyone. I am excited to share with you a few things coming up. Tomorrow night is a candidate forum, and in preparation for the April third election, this election includes two seats on our school board. Candidate forum is being held tomorrow night in the council chambers at City Hall. Our school board candidates who will be, who are able to participate in the candidate forum include Monty Schmiggy, Christopher Zweigardt, Kurt Rebholz, and Mary Wigan. And so that's a great opportunity for you to come on out and see the candidates. I understand that it is also televised, so if you're not able to be there in person, you're able to watch on TV. This Thursday at Badger, at six o'clock, we're having a community conversation on school violence. Our district administration, along with our local law enforcement, will be sharing some information with our community members, families, citizens, and staff who are in attendance, just on our procedures, what were, what's already in place, and what's coming up as far as the work that we do to prevent and address school violence. It specifically is focusing on school violence. It's not including of all aspects of school safety, so I just wanted to clarify that. This meeting is starting at six o'clock, and it is in the Badger Middle School cafeteria. Contributing to the profession, we've talked about this a couple of times, and I just wanted to highlight some recent events. We did talk a little bit about the WASDA convention that was in March, and so it was a focus on data and how schools use data to inform instruction. Fair Park and Decorah staff collaborated and presented at the WASDA convention. All of the teachers that are listed on the slide are also, they're also CLS teachers who talked about how they use data in a continuous improvement model and utilize data with their students. So they were able to extend their learning and how they've grown as educators, and their students have grown as learners to others in the profession. Green Tree staff was accepted to present, and if you looked up the Quality Educator Conference in the brochures that are now available, you will see our Green Tree staff, Michelle Mans, Jerry Kretlow, and John Graff will be presenting at the Quality Educator Conference this summer, and they're presenting on how we use professional learning communities to really look at the results we're getting, to really look at student growth and how our instruction is impacting students, and then to improve those processes. Continuing to contribute to the profession, this year, the annual Visible Learning Conference is in Chicago, Illinois, and our own Jennifer Martin is presenting at that conference. Visible Learning is an annual conference. People from all over the globe attend it. John Hattie, whose research was named Visible Learning and is foundational to a lot of growth and how we look at data and how we look at the impact of our practices. So Jennifer is presenting at that conference. She was not originally intending to, but was recently contacted by them in order to provide a presentation. And Tim, would you come on up? Recently, we had Ed Camp, Washington County, and I wanted Tim to be able to share a little bit about Ed Camp, Washington County, because it's, what a great experience and an opportunity for our educators.
You bet. So I'm excited to be here. You bet. So this is the third year that we've had Ed Camp, Washington County, and we hosted here in West Bend at Badger Middle School. We had approximately seventy educators that can attend from southeast Wisconsin, and so the real cool thing about Ed Camp is, is it's an unconference, meaning you don't know what sessions are going to happen until you get there that day. You actually create them as the users at the conference. So the day starts with a little breakfast, and that is provided by our sponsors. The entire day is funded by vendors and outside sponsor agencies, from breakfast and snacks to giveaway prizes and so forth. And you start the day with a little bit of breakfast in collaboration with the people at your table, and you put down post-it notes what it is that you want to learn about today, or what you'd like to lead a session on. So as you look at the different pieces there, and these are just some of the highlights, from personalized learning to virtual reality, technology tools, coding, dealing with trauma in the classroom, and blended learning, those are just some of the different sessions, and we had approximately twenty-five to thirty different sessions that happened throughout the day. And we had educators from Slinger, West Bend, Kewaskam are the three school districts that put this together, but as far as way is Fond du Lac, all the way into Milwaukee, and so it's a great five hours of PD, where staff can come together and collaborate and talk about the great things that they're doing. So we're excited to do it, and it's always a great day, so we always love to report on it, so thank you.
And Dave Hamelman is going to join us and talk a little bit about our superintendent search. I, at least one board meeting a month, if not every board meeting, Dave's going to share a little bit about where we are in the process of finding our new superintendent.
Thank you, Laura. Just very briefly, as you can see on here, the, just wanted to give an update as to, the stakeholder meetings are scheduled for tomorrow. They start, if you want to be here, starting at seven-thirty tomorrow morning, and it will go through till five-fifteen tomorrow afternoon. The boardwork session, again, is this coming Friday, when they will come back, the people from Mac and Jake, as they call themselves, will come back with the information gathered on tomorrow's meetings so that you can contribute to the important effort of finalizing the advertising, and those are set. Our plan is that they will go out on Monday, a week from today, so the thirty-day kind of period or four-week period that you all talked about, or we had had talked about in the schedule for the, for them, this is why we need them to do their job, to go out and really do the recruiting, too. We don't, don't just sit back and wait for the advertising to do, to work, although advertising, obviously, I think is something we ought to need to do. But this is when they do their job of recruiting people, and hopefully taking, getting to have some applicants that we might not otherwise be able to get at. So I do have just, this was the schedule that was discussed at the first board meeting, but it's just been retyped and refinaled, so I wanted to pass it around to all of you tonight. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, that's all I have in the assistant superintendent report for tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. And then we'll move along. The board president's report. Tonight, it's more of just a liaison report of my experiences at the high school the past week or so, but we're actually going to start with Tim, who attended a legislative breakfast.
I attended a legislative breakfast on Friday, March ninth. The legislative breakfast is held at CISA Six. It's a gathering of assembly representatives and one, one state senator, Senator Olson. They meet with superintendents, board members, and a small number of business managers. I went very specifically because I had testified for Senate Bill six ninety, which would raise sparsity aid and also the revenue limit base, in particular for West Bend. It's been locked in at a really low number. At that meeting, I, Senator Olson said that Governor Walker had signed the bill, but he actually didn't do it until Monday, so politicians. But I would, I would encourage other board members in the future, if you can, these are once a month, usually starting probably in January through, through June, and it's a great opportunity to come face-to-face with your local politicians. Rick Gundrum was there, probably his first one. I was not in a subgroup, and our subgroups broke apart and discussed with assembly men and women and Senator Olson, school security, and it was very interesting to get viewpoints from different districts that had, had attended. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim, for, yeah.
The next legislative breakfast is on April thirteenth, so if board members would like to go to that, please let Deb know, and then she will post if needed.
Okay. Sounds like a lucky day, right? That's Friday the thirteenth of April. All right, so thank you, Tim, so much for representing us and for getting to know our local politicians. That's important. While you were there, I had the benefit of attending the blood drive at the high school, as well as Reality Day, and also the talent show. Much more my speed. I'd rather be around the students personally, but we have to balance it all out, and the blood drive was really wonderful, well-organized, and they filled the entire day of slots, whether students or parents donating, staff as well. They did a lot of advertising for the Wisconsin Blood Center, a really cool marketing campaign in which every individual identified why is it that they're giving blood, and, and they had some really nice posters developed for the participants. The Reality Day, of course, is a great community event. Individuals from Huracan Bank, from Glacier Hills, from Mutual, a number of other facilities came and participated, as well, again, as staff members. I had the benefit of serving with Linda Leesner, who, if you ever hear anyone refer to the bookkeeper, she is the miraculous bookkeeper for over fifteen years, who is, does such a great job at the high school. So I got to do the personal, personal care selling there with Linda Leesner, and then, of course, the talent show. Laura and I had the benefit of being judges, and it was just a wonderful event. And, and I wanted to commend the audience. I just was really impressed by the praise, the support, the encouragement that all the students gave to the participants. It was wonderful to see. That's the other thing I notice every time I'm at the high school, I'm walking down the hall, somebody will look at me, they smile, and they say, hi, how are you doing? Like, that's so nice. So sometimes I think it can be awkward for kids, sometimes it's awkward for adults, and yet, when you're at the high school, people are very friendly, and I just appreciated. That's just common courtesy. It was really a pleasure to be there. So moving along, district's core values. Nancy.
Okay, so in choosing my core values, I chose commitment and engagement, and I think we all have kind of some ideas of what these things mean. So I did a little research today in my spare time, and commitment, according to Webster's, is the state or quality of being obligated to a cause, while engagement is the emotional involvement or commitment. And as I read, you know, different thoughts on what is, you know, commitment versus engagement, and. and are they one in the same and can they be one in the same? I think a lot of times people think mostly of staff. Is your staff committed to the cause or are they committed to their job and are they engaged? So I know that we in our district have had a lot of staff engagement conversations and how can we enhance that experience for staff as well as our students. So I thought another interesting definition that I found was that someone had referred to commitment as your, your emotional, you know, you're emotionally bound to something versus engagement is you're, is you're passionate about something. So I thought that really kind of fit a little better. And as we look at our staff, I mean, I think that we have levels of commitment that are crazy. I mean, I see staff working incredible hours and putting in incredible amounts of time dedicating to our students, but I also see passion that not many other businesses or communities can probably even imagine the, the passion that some of our staff have. And I don't just mean teachers, I mean, I mean some of our staff at the ESC or as you referenced, the bookkeeper or, you know, just all these different things. And then I thought, this goes well beyond our staff though, our students also have a commitment to, to their school and they also have a passion about their grades or about their sports or their extracurricular activities. And I thought this also needed to, you know, find its way into our families and our community. What's our commitment to education and our community? How are we going to ensure that for the next 50, 100, 200 years, our community is vibrant and continues to grow? We have to have a commitment to putting, you know, dollars and time and energy back into our education system and we also have to be passionate about that. And then last but not least, I also thought about our board and our level of commitment and, you know, we all love being here, especially without dinner. And so that's our commitment, I'm just putting that dig in about dinner, Deb. And then our passion, I mean, I think sometimes we're all very passionate about different things and sometimes that shows as we maybe aren't smiling or getting a little heated up here at times about issues. So we're all very passionate about it. So I guess for me, this was about looking at our staff, students, families, community and school board and acknowledging that we have a high level of commitment and we have a huge degree of engagement and passion and I'm very thankful to be part of that.
Thank you Nancy. Anytime that you want to look at the values of the school district, we have them posted. There's a couple of posters around but also on our district website. If you go to District, you'll see mission values and goals and you can just scroll down and identify those, but it's good to always refresh them in our mind. Why are we here? What's our purpose and what do we value and are we adhering to those values? So that was great Nancy, appreciate it. And then this is the portion of the meeting that we have public participation. I did not receive any comment cards this evening, however, if somebody wanted to address the board, it's not too late, we would still welcome that. All right, then otherwise, we'll move on to our reports and we have our East and West High School Athletic Reports this evening and I see Denny Ziegler approaching.
All righty, thank you guys very much for letting me recap the winter sports season for you on the east side. It was one of the best, I guess, winter sports seasons that we've had in, you know, the last few years. We had a team that had their best record in 15 years. Had a team that sent most kids to state in 15 years, you know, best record in 23 years for our wrestling program. We had some more state qualifiers than we had the previous years, so all around, we are making progress. I'm not going to say that we're where we at, but we are definitely making progress. So as we discuss the pillars, you know, we always talk about participation, how we are successfully compared to the rest of our conference, the engagement piece and then the satisfaction piece. So I always bring up the east athletic themes, you know, so we have a theme, we train to be an east sun and we talk about it daily with our athletes, with our coaches, and then the coaches relay that message on to the student athletes as well. Participation, for the most part, we were pretty consistent. The biggest drop, I would say, is probably boys basketball of eight and that's not really a drop for whatever reason, there were some kids that decided to, you know, not play multiple sports, focus on one sport as they got older, junior seniors. But, you know, the, this year's basketball program was very, very competitive, so we didn't graduate many athletes from last year, so the competition was raised up for those kids to be able to participate. You see the boys swim, there's 19 east, the 34 is total between east and west. Same with hockey, 13 east, 24 total between east and west. So, and as we start to grow, I think we're going to start to see more numbers, participation, things that we're doing with our programs, with our coaches to grow those numbers. You know, and for our snowboard program, you know, three years out, we started with five, now we're almost up to 18 total. It's pretty fantastic for, for a third-year club. Participation strategies that we've used, you know, same as always, the big thing that we're doing now is we started a What's Up East TV show where we highlight the employees, athletes, students, or scholars and teachers at West Bend High School, not just West Bend East but West Bend High School. And it's my goal to start to get more teachers and more scholars involved in that program, not just the athletes. Summer sports highlights, like I talked about, our boys swim, first year in the new conference, won the conference title. You know, we were undefeated in, in duel meets, three state qualifiers for wrestling, best record in 15 years. Snowboard, we were conference champions for the third straight year. Our ski team qualified for state, snowboard qualified for state, bowling, our girls and boys teams both qualified for state, our girls actually finished fifth at state. Our girls' basketball was the third-best season in the last nine years, it was an eight-game win improvement from last year and our boys' basketball was the second-most wins in the last 15 years. So, you know, as a whole, we are definitely making progress but still got room to grow. And this is just the records compared to the rest of the conference that we compete against, the new North Shore Conference. So as you can see, and teams such as ski, bowling, snowboard, they're not in the North Shore Conference but they have their own conference. So for those conferences, you can see where we finished compared to the teams that we are competing against. Then to kind of finish things up, competitive success strategies, we offered a new leadership course during Resource Hour this year, which we are finishing up this week. This will be the last week for our resource, so it's gone from middle of October and then we are finishing up this week with our, our leadership course. But we have taught students how to use the 12 pillars of peak performance and then how to become mentally tough, physically tough, and how to set their minds right and have the right mindset when they go into a practice, a competition, and how to incorporate their energy efforts into an everyday practice. So we focus on a lot of process-based practices, which is leading to the results that we have seen this winter sports season. Any questions? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Denny. And we have Brian Heimark.
Thank you for allowing us to share our winter success as well. I'll just kind of go through some of the similar things that Denny talked a little bit about. Leadership, what are some of the things that we did within our own programs, within our community? Our boys and girls both have junior Spartan programs that they volunteer at with skill development and all those kinds of things. Wrestling, we work at the Wildcat Wrestling Club. It's really nice, it's that we have a reciprocal agreement with them. They work our tournament, the, on a Saturday, then we turn around and the athletes and coaches referee and work the Wildcat Tournament, which is Sunday, the very next day. So it works out, works out great. Jackie and her gymnasts host a youth clinic where gymnasts can come in, try new skills. Our athletes become, you know, clinicians at that point as well, so, and it's interesting to talk to them after and all of the athletes afterwards, their perspective on being a coach or a leader and they, they see some of the same things that their own coaches see, so it's a good, good thing. Participation pillars, you can see, our, our numbers are pretty much the same as well. We did also see a little bit of a drop in basketball, but a big increase in girls' basketball. Sometimes when you have a coaching change in girls' basket, or in basketball or any sport, you, you might see a little drop in participation. We saw an increase of 10 girls in participation that year, so, and it kind of shows in our junior Spartans program, those girls are starting to come in and compete with club volleyball. That's a huge competitor to our girls' basketball programs. Gymnastics, you can see a little bit of an increase, wrestling is about the same that we were before, pretty steady, those types of things. One of the ones that we're going to take a look at is our clubs, one of the, and one of them being skiing. You notice that we just had two, we had two participants in skiing. It's a club, so it's not one of them that we necessarily fund, but do we want to continue to offer skiing? They did qualify as a team, it's a co-op, they did qualify for state, so it is a, it is a good co-op as well. Competitive success, basketball, you can see where they finished eighth in the conference, is a very young team, made great improvements as the year went on. If you were able to catch them, beat the conference championship team who was undefeated at the time in overtime at the high school, that was a great accomplishment for them towards the end of the season. They also beat the second-place team in conference twice, home and away. So if, for a very young team of sophomores and juniors and a few freshmen, they made some great gains along, along the year, or as the year progressed. Girls' basketball, had a great season, they finished in third place in the conference. They made it to the WI regional final, they got, they were lucky enough to play Beaver Dam, who ended up going, going on and being state champions again this year. Great, it was, it was just a, it was a great group of girls and they'll continue to have success. During the year, Alex Rondorf broke our school scoring record for a career. She has scored the most points of any athlete at West. She scored 1,194 points, surpassing the old record of 1,169 points set by Megan Conley. West also led the conference in average points scored per game. So that, that's a program that's really on the uprise. Gymnastics, again, we were fifth place at conference, fourth place at sectionals. Just to give you an idea of the competitive, the competitiveness of the conference, the first-place team in our conference was state champion in Division II, that would be Whitefish Bay. Second and third place in our conference were tied for fourth at the state meet as a team and the fourth-place team in our conference was fifth at the state meet. So it's a very, very tough conference for gymnastics, so it was great, great for them to be, have the competitive success that they did. For rest, swim and dive, they were here a couple of weeks ago, I think you saw them, very successful group of individuals and Coach Soxy and sixth place at sectional state qualifiers, outstanding job. And then wrestling, we had, we're sixth place at our sectional meet, we had four, excuse me, we had four athletes that were all conference at, in wrestling, at the overall meet. Five of them were sectional qualifiers and one state qualifier. That's all I have. Anything else? Any questions? I just, before I leave, I just want to also comment, you had mentioned Linda, Linda does a phenomenal job. If you ever get a chance to stop by and see her in, in the bookkeeping office, phenomenal. I'll talk a little bit about her when we get to hockey, so, thank you.
Super. Yep. I agree. Thank you, Brian, thank you, Denny. It was an exciting winter sports season, I'm glad we're moving on to spring, seems warmer. So when we have the consent agenda, at this time, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, motion passes. Oh.
I think that the standard, the policy requires a roll call vote on some of these schools.
Oh, okay. In that case, can I just backtrack and take a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda? Joel?
Yes.
Yes.
Tani?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Monti, motion passes. And then we'll move along to action items. So we have a West Bend West Boys Hockey Cooperative One-Year Agreement Renewal.
This is just a renewal, a one-year cop, hockey renewal. We have eight teams in our hockey co-op. If you look at your sheet, it is Germantown, Grafton, Hartford, Living Word, Port Washington, Slinger, West Bend East and West Bend West. And we are part of the North Shore Conference. This is a renewal. Usually WI renewals are a two-year renewal. This year, both gymnastics co-ops and hockey co-ops are one-year because they're going to be studying the co-ops. All the hockey coaches, gymnastics coaches are going to be studying the co-ops and see if they would like to have a different state championship for co-op teams. You could compete individual, as an individual in your, for your own team, there's a lot of different options for them, so that's why our, our co-ops, our, and because of our co-op size, West Bend West is the, has the most athletes on the co-op, that's why we are considered the host of the co-op and that's why we were looking for the renewal of the co-op.
I move to approve the one-year renewal of the Ice Bears Hockey Cooperative for the 2018-2019 school year.
Any other questions for Mr. Heimark? All right, in that case, all in favor, please signify. Still do roll call even for action items, okay. We'll take a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Tani?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes to approve the one-year renewal for the Ice Bears Hockey. Now we have, Tim Harder is filling in for Sharon Kalis tonight for our Head Start.
I know Nancy's excited about this tonight, so I'm filling in for Sharon, she had to leave early this evening for a family piece, so I have two presentations for you tonight, so I'm just going to open up where we're going to go here. So the first presentation is really, Head Start requires two different assessments and the first one being what they call an internal assessment and what they're looking for is internal factors that work with Head Start and what can we look as opportunities? What are our strengths and what are those opportunities then to move forward? So the benefits of the internal piece is help see the big picture, bring fresh perspective on what we're doing in Head Start or what's being done, understand the possibilities and challenges that that program may face, look for new ideas, build stronger community partnerships and then maximize the use of existing resources. So the team went and to start doing this, what they did is they used the Head Start leadership team, they planned and organized a process for this, they used a electronic survey to collect the data back, they looked at their survey results and then you'll see kind of the different analyzations and the decisions that went through this. So when you talk about who is surveyed, this is the breakdown. It includes family advocates, aides, teachers and parents, along with our Policy Council members, community partners and family advocates that all support Head Start at that point. Once that is selected, they'll re-review and analyze, the team will look at this and as they look through this, they look at what do they notice about the data and then really patterns or trends. What can we improve upon? What are things that are being constantly given as feedback pieces? Are there any outliers or interesting things? What do we know or what questions do we have to go back and ask at that point? And then what are some of the potential opportunities for Head Start's program as we move forward? So when you look at the different pieces, they were broken down by the team into challenges and opportunities. So as we look at the challenges, that, one of the challenges was the move to full days for four-year-olds. It has reduced the number of students that they serve, so instead of doing a half-day to move to a full day, they saw a decline in the number of volunteer hours at Head Start. And then challenges would be, mental health concerns have increased while the, the access or preventative care has decreased. And also, one area that is, is hard and Sharon talks about this a lot, is access for dental care as part of Head Start, finding dentists who partner with that program as they come in and see all of our students as part of that program. Opportunities, opportunities continue, part of it is, is education of parents, about resources that are here outside of the Head Start program and specifically related to healthcare providers. Engage parents in participation opportunities and as we look at Head Start, that's a, that's a county piece. And then offer more transportation off-site for, throughout the county in terms of what that looks like. So those are the pieces that the team looked at as internal pieces. As part of the process, Sharon explained that they are looking for board approval for each one of these audits and then this gets reported back to Head Start. So I'll take any questions that I can try to answer on this one and then we can go to the next one.
So Tim, the, the team consisted of seven parents, is that right?
I don't have the specifics of who was all on the team and who was all surveyed, but when I look at it, I see seven parents that responded to this.
Yeah.
In terms of what that looks like, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you can explain this. The move to full days has reduced the number of students. Is that because, I don't know why that would be?
I believe, and I'm going to go off to my memory here, Monty, is, is that there was a shift in the Head Start program that went from half-day to a full-day four-year-old program at that point. And so there were some students who dropped out because it was a full-day commitment in, in their families at that point. So, and I'm just going off of memory of what I believe Sharon had told me at that point.
I would, I would just suggest from the board perspective, and I know the administration has been keen on this, when they note the increase in the mental health concerns at that young age, how important that is for us just to be aware of that. Because I would extrapolate that if it's happening at Head Start, chances are even in our kindergarten age group, we recognize the importance of identifying that early intervention and needs.
I move to approve the Head Start annual self-assessment.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, I'll take the roll call vote.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tawny, yep. Further questions?
I had, I didn't realize that. Enrollment is declining in K4 or K3 for all day?
Just the four-year-olds. I believe three-year-olds is still a half-day program.
Okay. I was at that meeting, and the reason why it's declined is because of the, the district-wide K4 program. So a lot of the, some of the Head Start kids are choosing to go into the regular K4 instead of the Head Start K4. So that's the explanation for the declining, declined enrollment for all day. If that makes sense?
It sure does.
Thank you. Sorry about the talking and no one hearing me.
No, I appreciate that, and I think that lends itself to just our marketing and recruitment efforts for the strong Head Start program that we offer. Any other comments, discussions before I take a roll call vote? Joel?
Yes.
Yes.
Tawny?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you, Tim.
So the, the second one then is a, the community assessment, which is really our, our external factors to Head Start and things that are external to the program itself. So they look at external factors. It ensures that they have the right information to provide the services as they move forward for the population that they serve in that program. So again, same process, plan and organize, design, data collection and gather that data, and then review, then analyze, and then make decisions based off of that. And all of this then will go back again through the Head Start grant process. Community assessment topics, and you can see here as you look through from service area, so the area that we cover, eligible children, education needs of those families, health and social service needs, similar to what we just talked about, nutrition needs, housing and homeless childcare availability, transportation and communication, available resources within the community to address those needs, community strengths, and then the Head Start children, families and staff as they work together. So as we look at the data and as the team reviewed it, some of the findings and things that they want to look as they go forward, really number one is, is develop an outreach action plan to recruit students from Hartford, Slinger and Kewaskom. So we recently opened a site over in Hartford for our Head Start program. This is a way to outreach into the rest of Washington County as it's not just a, a West Bend program. Consider expanding the Hartford program for three-year-olds with an additional application for state Head Start funds at that point. So expanding that opportunity through that. Expand the policy council so that the public agencies that support Head Start are better represented, and also facilitate communication with families about services that then can support the needs of our families. As we have a great wealth of people in the communities who are willing to support our students, how do we communicate that out? And then continue to collaborate with the YMCA regarding Head Start classrooms in the community. So as we, as Tawny just mentioned, the, the 4K piece and our students going into 4K, looking at Head Start opportunities for our students outside of the Ralphs Building and having that classroom out in the community with them. And the YMCA has been a great partner with that. So that is the external kind of review. So I'll answer any questions that, again, on that.
I move to approve the Head Start annual community assessment.
Any further questions, discussions? All right, I'll take another roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
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 Tawny?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim.
Got it, Tim.
All right. Now we have Laura Jackson, I believe. I don't have my correct. For the Wisconsin standards.
So previously, the board, we had a group of teachers here who presented the Wisconsin science standards to the Board of Education for information. And tonight, we're asking that the board approve those standards so that then we can begin planning for the implementation of those with our students. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I presented some recommended, my recommended revisions and additions to the standards, and I haven't heard, no one's contacted me about that. What, what's going on there?
So I've reviewed those recommendations, and I listened to our teachers and what they had to say about the work that they had done on the Science Committee, looking at closely at the standards. I considered all of the teachers who were on that committee and how they represent the community, as well as our educators at large. And I consulted with John Esser on the recommendations made. We considered all of that information along with the vetting process that the state used in order to develop the standards, the public comment and all of those components. We determined that our teachers really did represent a, locally, our community quite well, as well as our educators and the perspective of the students from kindergarten through all, all levels of science at the high school. And based on their being, that group being in 100% agreement to move forward with the science standards as written, as well as John's own assessment and my own assessment, we decided to bring the science standards forward, forward for approval as written without amendment.
There's no requirement that the district accept the, or adopt the standards that the Wisconsin DPI prepares, is there?
So if you look on the DPI website, you will see the statement that we can look at them locally and make modifications locally if we so chose.
So for clarification purposes, obviously, great presentation at the last board meeting. Every teacher is unanimously in agreement that this is the best process to move forward with and that this will lead us into, I don't know, whatever, the next century of learning, whatever. I mean, like, this is really the wave of the future. This is what our students should be learning. This will help to-
And the teachers on the committee?
Correct.
Yeah.
And this will help to keep our students competitive, obviously, with other districts.
I would like to ask, at what level students are asked to evaluate evidence for and against origin theories? At what grade level does that begin?
Currently, I'd have to really look into the specifics of the science curriculum at each level. I would recommend that if we're evaluating for or against, that is at the high school level based on brain development. It may be in the middle school depending on the level of students. Currently, that is not part of our middle school curriculum.
In the third grade, there is talk about, there's a standard that addresses the fossil record and geologic record. And it talks about, long ago.
Long ago.
Can you define what long ago is?
So in them, for an eight-year-old, in our study of mathematics, they are not yet at the level of number sense where they understand the number, numbers in the billions. And they are working on, on their number sense. So for them to understand that this occurred long ago, it is appropriate for their age.
What do the standards include with regard to evolution of life from non-life?
Let me pull that up, and we can take a look at that.
I think there is no standard on that. What will be taught?
Once we have the standards approved, then we will go into and develop the curriculum based on what we're, where we're working to get students. So at this point, I won't, I, I can't answer that because the approval or non-approval of the standards tonight will steer our work future forward.
Why, why would the standards not include something on that?
Well, I don't know that Laura wrote the standards, so I'm not so sure she could answer that for you. I think you're asking her to ask her-
Maybe John can answer that question?
Well, I don't think John wrote the standards either.
Yeah. So why it would not, I don't have the why.
What about evolution from human, of human evolution from animals? Is that presented in the standards?
Again, the specific of that, I'd have to look. Do you already know that answer?
Yes, I do. They're not there.
Thank you.
I do have concerns about these standards because I'm concerned about the presentation of origin theories. And I did have a conversation with Laura on this before, before the meeting, subsequent to our previous meeting. And I think we've come to some mutual understanding. Whether that's shared by the entire science team or not, I'm not quite sure. That remains to be seen. But I have concerns because when you talk about the field of science, you're talking a wide range of things. The standards talk about scientific findings are limited to what can be supported with evidence from natural, from the natural world. And I can agree with that in one sense, but maybe not in another sense. It depends on how you interpret it. From the standpoint of looking at evidence and seeing it, observing it, being able to test, experiment, repeat, that, everyone can agree with that. That's not a problem. But then when we get into origin science, where we're, origins theories, where we are looking back in time and we're inferring, we're making assumptions, we're guessing suppositions, that's not quite so exact as what we might observe on a daily basis.
I think what you're saying, Monty, is very theoretical. And it sounds like some of the topics you would like to discuss need to be happening at Sunday School on Sunday.
No, I'm talking about theories of origins.
Talking about your theory.
No, I'm talking about theories of origins that are presented in the standards. I'm not talking about those that you're referring to.
Do you have other standards you'd like to present to the board? I, I didn't see the email that you sent to the team. I don't have a clue what you recommended to them. What's in front of us right now was agreed on by our teachers who have degrees in science. Some of them master's degrees. They were in 100% in agreement that these are great standards. In fact, they were actually very enthusiastic about them. Do you have something else you'd like to present?
Yes, I would like to talk about the range of validity for theory. And I was in the process of doing that. The theory is based on some evidence, a lot of missing evidence, inferences, assumptions, its explanations. It's not necessarily truth. And the standards indicate that because the standards say that theory is changeable.
I'm going to call point of order here, Monty, because I think you have made your point clear. And ultimately, this is a vote of the board to approve the Wisconsin science standards. So I'd like to, at this point, I appreciate your contribution there. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Wisconsin science standards for implementation in the West Bend Joint School District Number One.
Second.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yes, I do. Just give me a moment, please. I don't feel that I should be cut off like that, and I think that this is going to require a more extended conversation. So I move to postpone discussion on, on the motion until we can schedule a committee of the hall or a board work session for extended discussion.
Okay, all in favor?
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
No. No, Tawny needs to vote.
Tawny?
No.
Yes.
So motion fails.
I would like to make an additional motion.
Have to read it for the benefit of Tawny?
I will, I will. But before I do that, I would like to make a couple of, a couple of statements. First of all, I would like to quote Richard LeWinton, geneticist from Harvard. "We take the side of science in spite of the patent absurdity of some of its constructs, in spite of its failure to fulfill many of its extravagant promises of health and life, in spite of the tolerance of the scientific community for unsubstantiated just-so stories, because we have a prior commitment, a commitment to materialism." Okay, the motion I would like to make is, I move to amend the motion that's on the table, to add the words, with the provision, in other words, I'll, I'll read the beginning of the, I'll read the beginning that's on the floor, and then I will add what's here. I have to. "I move to approve the Wisconsin science standards for implementation in the West Bend Joint School District Number One, with the provision that the district leadership prepare and share with the board a statement of guiding philosophy, a statement of guiding philosophy, before fall, that clarifies the standards to protect young students from one-sided theories of origins as factual, to foster teaching the difference between evidence and theory, and theories as tentative and changeable, and to encourage the students to examine scientific evidence for and against naturalistic theories of origin."
All in favor, roll call vote?
I would like to speak to the motion. Actually, there are some components of this motion that are already represented in the standards. The, I, I mentioned just before with regard to the fossil record and geologic record in third grade, that it's very general. It doesn't get very deep into the process. That falls into, that, that fits within the first part here where it says, clarifies, to protect young students from one-sided theories of origins as factual. The next part, to foster teaching the difference between evidence and theory, and theories as tentative and changeable, that's actually part of the standard in the ETS III series of the standards. And to encourage students to examine scientific evidence, that's also in- And to encourage students to examine scientific evidence, that's also in, in the standards, for and against naturalistic theories of origin. Now, that part is not called out in specific, but it does call for examination. I spoke with Laura Jackson, Assistant Superintendent, on these matters this afternoon, and I believe Laura, I would ask you to comment on whether you agree with this.
So I think that having a guiding statement, a guiding philosophy statement on how we do science instruction in the district is a really good idea. I think that having that guiding philosophy is a good idea. That puts it out there that we do, we have investigations and whatever it is that we determine to be the guiding philosophy of how science instruction is done. That being said, I don't know that I would put this specificity in the motion, and I would leave the motion at a statement of guiding philosophy.
If I might add, if we're going to have anyone write any type of a statement of guiding philosophies, I'm going to request that it be actually by the professionals who teach science, not by board members who might have other agendas or other ideas. I don't think we should be micromanaging our staff and trying to tell them what type of guiding philosophies they need to use when they are trying to teach our students.
All right, so now I'll take a roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
No.
Toni? No.
Sorry, um, no. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Tim?
No.
Yes.
All right, motion fails. So we can return to our original action, which had been moved as well as seconded, and now I will take a roll call vote, which was, I move to approve the Wisconsin Science Standards for Implementation in the West Bend Joint School District Number One, and that was seconded, I believe, by? Joel?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Toni?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Motion passes and is approved. Moving along, construction management firm recommendations by Dave Ross. Oh, did I, did I say that wrong? Laura, I'm sorry.
So, excuse me. The, previously, we had had a board work session on the construction management firm, and the, we followed up on some additional information that we needed after that board meeting, and that information was presented, has been shared with the Board of Education. Based on all of the information we have on the construction firms, and on the, that we heard in the presentations, and then the follow-up information, we are recommending that the board approve CG Smith as, I'm sorry, CG Schmidt as the construction manager for, as we move forward in looking at our facilities.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Laura? Otherwise, I would take a motion.
I move to approve retaining CG Schmidt as construction manager for the high school facility and Jackson Elementary School projects.
Second.
Any other questions, discussion? At that time, I'll take a roll call. Joel?
Yes.
Abstained.
Toni?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Abstained.
Okay. In that case, the motion passes. Five oh. Thank you.
Thank you. Forgot the two at the end.
Five oh two. Right, okay. All right, and then we have a third reading of revised board policy by Monty.
Okay. This is Policy 166, Board Member Electronic Communications. We, this is on the third reading. We had it last time. Basically, the paragraph, I was thirty, forty-four to fifty-five was added to forum board members that when they use electronic communications to put out their opinions and whatever on social media and like, that they are responsible for the record-keeping on that. The district is not qualified to do that record-keeping for the person. That is standard public records law is added to this policy. I move to approve revised board policy 166, Board Member Electronic Communications, I should say electronic, not email. Electronic communication.
Any questions, discussion regarding these additions to this policy? I personally will be voting no. I went through and reviewed the public records law, open meetings law, state statutes and such, and I just don't feel like the language is appropriately represented within this policy. I think we could do better personally for our, for our district. Not saying that the PRG, the policy group that we utilize for these samples is necessarily wrong, but when I read it specifically with all the different legal references, I just didn't see it clear enough to, to confirm this, but that's just my opinion.
It is, it is taken from the PRG.
Right, which I know that, but the PRG is not necessarily the bible of state statute, and when you read the state statute specifically, I don't see that it's personally represented as clearly as I would like for our district.
Can you identify something in particular?
It was just very, very general in the way the state statute's written, and here it's so specific that I think it just creates really probably unnecessary attention, much like I said last week, when we put so much attention into policy, we have a tendency to really neglect our clear focus, which is being here for the students and, and making that. So it's just a personal opinion.
Well, if you'll pardon me, when you talk about so much attention, that's because these are the 100 series. If we were talking in a month or so about a 300 series or a 400 series, that, that's going to be entirely different thing. And just talking about how much we're talking about it doesn't really get to the root of the issue, which is whether there's something wrong with this particular paragraph.
Right, and I've often said that change for the sake of change doesn't necessarily represent progress, so adding this clause in there, I'm not certain that it's necessarily beneficial for our district. I can appreciate it, and I understand the attention we've put to the 100 series has been, has, has, has been important and time well spent, so I appreciate the efforts you put into that. I have nothing further to say. I would take a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Toni? No?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, six to one. All right. Board work session. So we had a busy week. We met with the construction firms on March 6th, and at that time, we narrowed it down to two, both equally comparable, not a significant difference really in the, the price of the firms. So it kind of came down to just a personal feeling and instinct, and CG Schmidt has done work in our area. They're one of the largest firms in Milwaukee, one of the largest firms in the nation, but they have strong roots in West Bend. They helped develop the Cathy Hospice. They were the contract management firm for the hospital in the town of Polk. They also did some significant revisions at the West Bend Country Club, as well as at Mutual. Nine of their executives, I think, have attended school in West Bend. One of them, management firm, actually went to school at Jackson Elementary. So they're a testament to the great education that one can find in West Bend that's led them to become architects and engineers and construction firm managers. So I, overall, I think we all felt a sense of comfort and connection to CG Schmidt, and it was just a really great meeting to understand more of what these firms do and what they can bring for our district. And then on March 7th, we met, yeah.
I would just like to clarify, just a small portion. On that night, we did not take any votes. And however, we did talk about preferences and, and order, and we saw clarifying questions on the different search firms and the presentations and the, and the cost and analysis of each of those. So just to clarify, there were some favorites, but no votes taken or anything like that, not even a roll, not even a straw poll.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And then we met with Melissa, Dr. Melissa Thompson, is the superintendent of the Sparrow? Swallow, wrong bird. Swallow School District. And then Brian, and I'm forgetting his last name, he's the superintendent of Schwab Nan, and he's retiring this year. So they came, met with us, we discussed some of the personality attributes, characteristics that our community board would be seeking in our new superintendent. We came up with a general list tomorrow. They'll be back, they'll discuss with business members, community members, parents, teachers, some of the characteristics they would be looking for, and then on Friday, we'll kind of combine those to come up with an, an overall profile of our superintendent search. And we'll move on, technology and innovations. Ken, you had a lot to share.
Well, yes and no. Okay. If I shared everything, we'd be here for probably two hours. So I will try to summarize this as best as I can, understanding that the documents that we reviewed are online at Board Docs, and you certainly can open them up and go there for all the extraneous detail as such, and I don't want to make light of it, but there's, there was a lot there. On March the 8th, we had a meeting that reviewed the one-to-one program, one technological device, or one computer device to one student program. That program involved students from grades five, six, and seven. The goal of, was, actually, of that program is finally to get the district to having one-to-one devices all the way through high school. So, all in all, the students over, they, they supported the program. There was a survey that was done, and they supported the program. And 55% of the students indicated that the, the one-to-one program made their classes more interesting when they were using technology. And 93, 94% did use their Chromebooks in the learning process, so the vast majority of them did use the technology. 62% report that having a device assigned to them made it possible to create a variety of projects. Teachers indicated that the students were using their Chromebooks at home, and they were more likely to complete their, their homework, so that was a good thing. Teachers had the opportunity to give immediate feedback, even after class time, to students who had a question about their homework, et cetera. And the teachers 100% supported providing a device to all students. So it's a positive program, and it will be moving forward. We also took a look at the five-year rolling plan at that same March 8th meeting, and that is something that we reviewed in detail tonight in our, our meeting. And here is where I'm going to do a real summary, because I was not sure what exactly, you know, what detail should be separated out. What I can say is that our technology department is working on making sure all of our students have the technology they need to use in the learning process, and that our educational staff is supported in using that technology within the classroom as well. The West Bend School District has adopted what's called the Future Ready Framework, framework to help guide the strategic planning around technology that's infused in learning and, and in our supports of our students. And that five-year, I should say that Future Ready Framework has five what are called categories or gears to it. Gear or category, one is instruction, learning, and assessment. Gear two is technology and hardware. Three is empowering innovative leadership. Four is professional learning and building capacity, and five is data and privacy. And understand that we are moving forward in our technology in our district. I am amazed at the amount of work that is intended to be accomplished in the next five years. I did ask Mr. Harder, is this realistic? He tells me, yes. He knows more about it than I do. So there's a lot to be done. We have a phenomenal technology department, very hard-working staff, technicians, there are three of them that are, I mean, they're doing phenomenal work, given the fact that they're probably doing maybe three, they're covering maybe three to four more times the number of devices that would be covered by tech in another environment. So I would urge you to go to the, the plan and take a look at it. It is just, it's phenomenal, so, and I think it'll serve us well.
Thank you, Ken. Good job. And then, Monty, finance and HR.
The Finance and Human Resources Committee met this afternoon. We reviewed the process, progress with regard to the 1819 budget. Basically, the, we had a, a board work session a little while ago, I forget exactly when, and we talked about the drivers for the budget. Fund balance, we're looking to keep that fund balance between 14 and 18%. We're looking to have a balanced budget, we're looking to levy to the max. Fund 46, we would like to continue to put $250,000 into Fund 46, which is for capital expansion. Fund 41 is for capital improvements, repairs. Looking to increase that by 4% as it, as it, as we have done in the past. We're trying to maintain a 70/30 calculation on compensation for, salary and benefits versus other costs, but that, please don't be misled by that number, it's not an exact number. And we want to meet the market in terms of compensation. The schools, individual schools have been working to create their own budgets, as they do at this time of the year. Departments have been working on their budgets, about 70% of those have been completed. They're working on the, they start with the contractual, what, what are the things that we have to do? Then they go to the operational, and finally to the strategic and some of the additional things they might want to do. These will be brought to the board in the April, second meeting of, of April, for a detailed look at what has been prepared at that time. The board will be approving the preliminary budget in June, and then it's taken to the electors eventually, and probably at the end of October, I think, the, the board has to approve the final budget. Some things that are, are changing right now, the state is going to be providing an additional $204 per pupil of categorical aid from the state to the district, and also the governor signed, Tim talked about, raising the revenue limit base, which would affect us, an additional $155. However, all of that goes into a mix, and then we have to see where it comes out in the end. in terms of, of what the actual impact will be on our budget. Because there are other factors, open enrollment, I heard about, is a factor that can, can affect the overall. Plus, if we continue to have declining enrollment, there might be an effect. So all of that has to be put in the blender and come out with something when we have more information. That's my report.
Thank you, Monty. Laura is going to share with us our calendar.
So the next meeting is not a board meeting. However, there may be board members in attendance at the Candidates Forum at the City Council Chambers tomorrow night. On March 22nd, we have a community forum at Badger, starting at 6 o'clock. And again, not a meeting of the Board of Education. However, board members may be in attendance at that meeting. On March 23rd, we have a, a meeting here at the ESC at 8 o'clock. There is a public meeting first, followed by the executive session. So that's a correction on your calendar. On April 9th, we have a regular Board of Education meeting. That one right now is scheduled to start at 6:30. And so that's a little earlier. Normally, they start at 7:00. It is because it's a. Oh, my gosh, I'm really sorry.
It's okay.
Where's Sharon? No, Sharon's not here. I said I was not going to make the.
We'll start at 6:30, April 9th, right?
Yep, 6:30 on April 9th, which is our normal. Thank you. All right, April 23rd is our following board meeting, and that is the second board meeting of April. And that's it for our upcoming meetings.
Thank you. Any other follow-up communication considerations? I'd like to wish our students a great spring break as well as our staff. And if there's no further needs, we'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, roll call one more time?
Yes.
Yes.
Tony?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you for being here.